All right, we'll now call the city council special meeting to order for October the 30th at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Invocation given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard. Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McKeer?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
All right, we have a special meeting today. For an unfortunate topic, we have resignation of our city manager. Item number four, is there anything from Ms. Coger to go over on this topic?
Just acknowledging that the general release has been signed per the employee agreement, and it will be fully executed on Saturday.
Okay.
Up until then, she has the right to revoke it.
Okay.
And that's all.
Got it. All right, any, there's nothing for us to do on that other than just informational? Okay. All right, item number five. We want to go ahead and approve the city manager job description so we can post this ASAP. So are we going to deviate at all from what we did the last time?
I don't think we should.
Okay, any reason to deviate from last time?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. As I, I think this came from-
Ms. Taylor, can you pull your microphone down?
I think this came from Denise, did it not Denise? You said, give me a moment, let me find it. You said that the council was going to be able to choose what interview they wanted?
Yes, just like we did last time, if council wants to go the same route that we did before. The job, is that what you're asking for the interviews?
I thought we chose from the top three.
Yes, council was provided all the applicants that came in, all the applications, and then depending on how they met the criteria for the qualifications of the job. There were, I think, last time nineteen applications came in and six met all the requirements. And then council narrowed it down to four, I believe it was, to interview.
Three.
And three ended up interviewing, one backed out at the last minute.
Okay.
And then from there, then council decided who to hire, pending the background and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the ones that we interviewed, weren't those the ones that fit all of the criteria? I believe that's how we got to the four last time.
Based on the job description.
Right.
Okay, anything else on that?
Yeah, there's one item I'd like to bring up under number B, the duration of posting. I'm not sure, but I believe last time it might have been thirty days, and I think that we had quite a few applicants. And then as time had gone on, it seemed like they had dropped off, maybe possibly because they applied at other cities and maybe got other jobs. And so I was wondering what the council would think if we would make this a shorter distance this time, either to end maybe the week before Thanksgiving, or whatever time that you might think better, but I think that if we get a lot of applicants right away, I think we all take the opportunity to look as many as possible. And if, to make it sooner than later could be a positive for the city.
Well, we don't have any regular meetings scheduled until December 8th, so.
Right.
You know, obviously, I would assume that the council will agree to go ahead and post the listing today, so, I mean, I don't think I would do it less than thirty days. Because thirty days takes us at least to our next meeting. It would end before the next meeting, so we would have an opportunity at that point to, you know, select the top ones, or at least, you know, make some headway there.
The last job description we left open was from June 4th to July 16th. So that was, what, forty-five days, just FYI?
Okay.
Thirty days?
Forty-five days.
So everybody agrees on thirty days this time?
No, I don't.
I would be good with that.
I don't think we should be in a rush for our new city manager. Personally, I think that perhaps we should be trying to select somebody probably in January. Let's go through the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then select somebody come January because this is a, this is a big position, and I don't think it's something that we should rush into.
Plus with the holidays, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, plus with the holidays, people are busy. It may or may not be hard for them to show up if they were selected, Zoom if they were selected, I mean, you know, we're going right into the holidays. I think I have to agree with you, Ms. Taylor, on that one.
Not only for them, it's the holidays for us as well.
Right.
So Jerry, if we, just because we advertise it for a certain length of time, does that mean that we have to not do any interviews until after that time? Or could we, if we go ahead and get a bunch of interest, could we go ahead and do interviews intermittently?
Well, it's not generally preferred to give a date as to when it'll close, and then select somebody earlier than that.
Okay.
Because then, you know, people might be relying on that because they're busy and trying to get the application done and so on. Because it's not a small application.
Right, okay.
So perhaps we go out for thirty days, and then at our December 8th, if we don't have any applicants that we like or want to proceed with, then we would put it out for an additional thirty days?
You can always extend it.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, as far as the posting, is there any special places to post it, or any discussion there?
There was a list provided in the packet of all the web boards and places that we post. There's a few that charge a fee, but those are the main ones that we'd want to put this particular type of position on, so.
So is your suggestion to go with all of them?
All of them, especially the free ones, we'll post them there, and then the few that there are fees associated with.
Okay.
And one thing else, if I could, Mayor, I did a little research just to give options so council knows what's out there. And there are agencies, recruiting firms that specialize in government, that you could hire an interim through, but it is costly. And I shared with them, you know, our size and what we're looking for. And to hire an interim through an agency, they would want fifteen thousand a month.
Oh, wow.
A month?
A month.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
So, just to share that information.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we put the job posting out for thirty days. We go with the job description that has been presented, and we go with advertising it on all the suggestions from the city staff, even the paid ones. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
So I think that we certainly need a good interim, and we need somebody with some experience. So with that, I did have a good conversation with someone who does have the experience. He's offered to do it, so I'd like to make a motion that we select Mr. David Flowers as the interim city manager.
So how come?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Need a second. I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, go ahead.
Why couldn't we all put a choice in?
You can say whatever you wish.
I think maybe we should maybe meet back, put a list together, sorry, put a list together of everybody that might be interested. I've had a couple people reach out to me. I'd have to just kind of talk to them and work through it a little bit, but I don't think we should make an interim tonight.
I disagree.
You would.
Mayor, I have a question. Do you not believe that there's somebody employed with the city, maybe one or two people that can run the city?
So the issue with that is, as we've seen in the past, I mean, there's people that certainly possibly could do it. It's definitely a big strain. We definitely don't have all of our positions filled as it is. So to put that strain on the staff that exists, if there's some sort of a slip-up or some sort of a perceived anything, it certainly puts them in a bad position going forward, working for the city, and I don't think that there was, we've also lost several key staff here recently. So I think it was best to get somebody that doesn't currently work for the city. That way, we don't affect anybody that does currently work for the city.
Then why can't we have a selection of people that don't work for the city, rather than just one person?
I've made a selection.
You did, but the rest of us haven't had a chance to.
And that's fine, I mean, that's certainly your opinion.
My thing on that, as far as like waiting, like you're saying, is we have a short amount of time that the current city manager is going to be here. So the longer that we wait, you know, if we wait right up until that point, then I think it's going to be a lot harder for somebody to come in and kind of keep everything going. But if we are able to bring that person in while the current one is here, then I feel like that would be more of a seamless, you know, transition into the interim or whatever. So at least that person could kind of get a feel for the things that are going on, what's coming up, and all that kind of stuff. If you, if somebody's, I mean, we went through this when Mark was gone cold turkey. It was kind of like shell shock the next morning, everybody kind of had to scramble and try to figure out what the heck was going on. And I feel like that puts a lot of stress on the rest of the city staff. Whereas if we bring somebody in that can basically kind of be onboarded, like some of the other employees that we've recently hired, I feel like that would provide a more, or a less stressful transition in the interim.
Okay, so we didn't have a problem calling a special meeting at the last minute. So I would think that maybe we could all get a list together, and we could all visit our different avenues, and then meet maybe next week and go over those options, whereas it doesn't look like somebody picked the favorite.
Or it doesn't look like he had, he himself had a conversation with one resident, and we didn't, we didn't get a say-so in it. You know, we didn't get a say-so.
You're having a conversation right now.
Whether we had the time to talk to someone. He seemed like he had the time to talk to someone, and he brings it to the table, and he tells us who this person is. I wish that I knew that we was doing this, you know? Go out, everybody, look for somebody, let's bring somebody, because we're going to be choosing and picking tonight, from who we choose.
Well, I mean, what I did, as soon as I got, as soon as I got the email, I started racking my brain, you know, what are we going to do? Who are we going to put in that spot? I mean, this time we had more say-so or more planning time. I mean, I don't remember when I got called to tell me the time of this meeting or whatever, but last time we didn't have any time. It was just, it was that night, and it was over, and we had to hurry up and scramble and put them in. I mean, I've been thinking about it since I got the email that we were going to be having to make a decision.
We all got that. I mean, I was in a shell shock when I got the news. So to be honest, I wasn't out there looking for a new, someone to fill Dr. Kelly's place. That's not what I was doing. I was hoping that when we get back to this meeting, what I was thinking was that we were going to choose employee within. That's what I was thinking. We was going to choose some type, whether it was one employee or two employee, to hold things down until we put, you know, we put out another RFP, whatever. That's what I was thinking. So I'm blindsided that he's already talking to somebody, and they have discussed it and agreed that this is who he wants. And I'm thinking that it's going to be an employee that works for the city, just like last time. You know, she said, we're doing it the same way we did it last time.
I just, I was on vacation last week, and I didn't see my email till Saturday, and I was shell shocked too, as for, I'm sure everybody was, very surprised, we were all caught off guard. But the first thing I did was start making calls for the same reason, to see if we could find somebody with some experience or knowledge that was fit well with the city because of the fact that we are understaffed. And I actually did make some calls, and got, some people said no, that they were not interested, and gave me some other people's possibilities, but those possibilities weren't acceptable, so since I only had a few days to look into this, that's as far as I got. So I, I think that, I think David Flowers is well-known in the city. He's had the job before, and I would be fine with him taking interim.
And it seems like me, you three, already knew that y'all was looking for somebody on the outside.
Exactly.
Where me and Shelley was sitting here thinking it's going to be somebody from the inside. Well, it's the way it looks, it's the appearance of it.
Okay, that's cool. Got it. Anything else? That's everything?
Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. We all knew you were going to pick David Flowers tonight because he was already out there, but I just wanted to say that he resigned under ethics conflicts. Yes, he did. The night that you sat there and I sat right there, I brought him out into the council, everyone discussed it, and then he resigned before the motion was made to terminate him that night. So my point is, if you're hiring someone as a favor, because there may be an ethical issue that you two have, and possibly you two, Jim, you've got the perfect person in there for you. Do we have a guarantee from the public that you are not going to get in his way of any investigation on you two? That you're not going to try to influence his-
We're all well aware of your history with David Flowers, we get it.
You don't get to interrupt me. I have my opportunity to speak. That is the appearance that you're giving out tonight. You've already selected the person without going through any level of vetting of any kind. No consideration. I know for a fact that Mr. Bernard has gone around town saying, despite what you put in the newspaper, that you were upset with the city manager because she sat with the wrong people at a fundraiser. That not only that, you also claim that she got rid of four key people when four key people resigned. So, you know, you all have this misconstrued conception based off of your personal agendas. And so far, it's very clear to me that you're stalling, kicking the can down the road in order to prevent any further investigation on yourselves, and you're having the perfect man to do that for you.
We're stalling?
Yes.
Stalling how?
By picking a friend, making sure that you have someone in there. Do we have your guarantee, like I asked before? Do the residents of the city of Avon Park have the guarantee from this council that you're not going to get in his way, influence any decisions that he makes? Try to stall any paperwork from getting out into the public, because so far, that's what's been going on. You cannot tell me that you haven't tried to influence the outcome of this investigation by A, not participating in the investigation, and making it sound like it's a big ruse. So, you know, go ahead and hire the friends that you need, pay them the money that you want, because so far, it's been working for you.
All righty. Anyone else?
Yeah, oh boy. Alex D., 3835 Arlington, Florida.
The comments will have to be made to the council.
Who do you guys think you're going to get? Who do you guys really think that you're going to get? Are you going to tell people when you put this out for the mess, the quagmire that they're coming into? And when we got people back here that want to stifle voices, that want continuing investigations to go on ad nauseam? You literally just got your big F-U letter back from the AG's office. They're all telling you that there is nothing here, and yet people are screaming for more investigation, more investigation, more investigation. How much is this costing? How much will it cost you? Let me ask you that, Ms. McKeer. How much will it cost the city to hire and train in or bring in somebody else? How much does it cost in actual money to taxpayers when you have turnover of a city manager every year? Because their entire job is taken up by a sham investigation that you want to continue forever. How much does it cost on the taxpayers?
You know, it doesn't matter. If there's a price tag on it, and we can get to the bottom of corruption, it doesn't matter how much it costs to me.
I'm certain that it doesn't matter how much it costs, the cost is, because it's not your money to play with.
It's not your money either. It's not your money either.
You've gotten to the bottom of it.
Are you a resident here?
You've gotten to the bottom of it.
Is it your money? Nope, it's not.
As much as you want to try to silence people, you're the one-
I'm not silencing anybody.
-that wanted to bring this to everybody's attention, and now that you've got it, you don't like where it's going, because everybody's told you over and over and over in no uncertain terms.
Who's told me that? I have had one person, once.
Oh, so you didn't get the letter back? You didn't get the-
I've got one letter back, yes, from the AG.
Just one letter?
And the AG told us-
You just got one letter, so you're not giving them the letter that you received from the DBPR either, are you? Saying that there are no issues with anybody's real estate license, et cetera?
Yes, all of the letters have been submitted.
Oh, so you did get more than one letter. You got at least two letters.
You said the AG, I said, yes, I got the AG. You know what, I'm not going to argue with you. I am not.
Sure you are, you argue with everybody, because you're spending other people's money, and you don't care. How many more investigations do you want?
A hundred.
I know, a hundred.
I want them all, I want all of them. I want all of them.
And look at your attitude, you want a hundred more, because you don't care what it's costing.
You came up here attacking me, and you're telling me, look at my attitude, sir, please.
You're right, because you're spending other people's money.
Yours, I'm spending your money? Am I spending your money?
I'm not spending other people's money.
Are I spending your money?
I spend money in this city. I spend money in this city.
You don't even live here.
So, and you-
We need to call a point of order, because I'm not going to sit here and listen to this shit all night. Yes, I said it.
Right, you don't like it when it's coming back at you, do you?
Because you've got no reason to come back at me.
I do, because I'm one of the ones that does come here and spends money.
You can't make comments from the audience, people. You'll have your time.
So how much is it going to cost?
So you can attack me.
Are you going to tell the new applicant, are you going to tell the new applicant what they're coming into?
I mean, yeah, it's two minutes. I'm not answering you, because I'm not going to, I'm not going to be in this conflict with you.
The new applicant's going to need to know what they're coming into. She just said she wants a hundred more investigations. A hundred more investigations. That's going to take your budget for the next five, ten, fifteen years. The only time you could even get an investigation that you somewhat liked was when you had to go out of state to get it. Why do you have, why do you have the attorney stating that the person running the investigation was the city manager? Why do you have that going on? That doesn't sound like an independent investigation. That sounds like somebody's personal agenda.
All right. Name and address for the record, please.
David Flowers, 107 West Lake Damon Drive, Avon Park. As much as I want to help the city, I'm not going to go through what I went through again in 2019. So I am withdrawing from consideration for this.
Don't do that, David.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just can't do this.
Thank you for being fair.
Putting up with that, putting up with that, I can't, I can't do it. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, well, obviously, there's no point in making the motion.
No, the motion becomes moot if he's refused the appointment, so.
All right, well, I guess we will have to reconvene in the future, unless there's something else on this subject.
And Mayor, you still don't want to look at our employees that you think that at least two of them can hold this city down until we get a new city manager? You don't even want to look at our employees?
It's not that. I mean, I've heard from some of the employees that told me they didn't want to do it, they weren't willing to do it. I mean, if there's, if I'm not aware-
Did you ask all of them? Did you ask all our managers, all our, everybody? Or just a few?
I didn't poll every employee in the city, if that's what you're asking.
No, well, let me rephrase that, Mayor. Did you ask all of our managers?
No, I heard, I heard about a handful.
I will say this, I did talk to Melody, and Melody did say that she would, with the help of other staff management and any other people in the city that she thought would be helpful, that she could take over that position for a temporary amount of time. And the fact that the city manager did put her in charge when she was just gone recently, I think that until we decide to find an interim on a more permanent-type basis, I would not have problems with her, maybe, and Denise helping, because they both have backups. And anybody else on staff, we need to have somebody to be able to take that position as soon as possible. And so, like I said, I talked to Melody, and I did talk to Denise, and I think that they would be, on a temporary basis, they could take care of the city for a short amount of time.
Did you talk to her today, or?
A couple of days ago, I had some questions to ask them. And while I was talking to them, then I asked them, you know, because of the fact that the city manager did, in her email that I read, when she was going to the class, that she put all calls would be taken care of by Melody in her place. So I asked Melody that time, if she would, if something happened, would she be up to doing it on a temporary basis? And she said, yes, as long as she had help from other staff members, and she mentioned Denise, and I believe one other. And I think that on a short time, we could do that until we decide to pick somebody to be the interim manager. So I would be, we have to have somebody take over right away, and I think that I'd be fine with those.
I would like to put a recommendation. I don't, I don't see neither one of them here. But if I had to put my recommendation on the table, it would be two employees. Chief Marcy would be over the employees. He would be responsible for our employees, because I'm very, I'm very careful who I put over the employees for the simple fact that at this point, we cannot afford to lose not one of them. And then I would put Danielle Phillips over the city manager, interim city manager, again, because she has filled that position once. And I think they would make a great team together until we can, until we can fill the position.
Ms. Coger, did you have anything to add to what Jim was saying? Are you willing to do that or not?
Well, we're trying to reach out to Melody, because after that conversation, she advised that she would rather not take it.
That's what she said to me this morning.
And that was today, so.
And I don't think Danielle Phillips would be able to either, because.
She's going to be out on leave-
Yes.
Here in another week, for a couple of weeks, so she'll be out.
Okay.
Melody just confirmed she is not willing to do it.
Well, that's what I kept getting, so. All right, so we do have a little bit of time. Obviously, your last day will be the 21st. So certainly, we have some time to try and find someone else. Again, I wholeheartedly agree that an outside person, you know, it would be different if we had our full staff that had been here for a while. But as I said, we lost some key positions, so an outside person certainly keeps the staff that are in place safer. Nobody's getting, you know, put in a tough position. So if we had a qualified person from the outside, I do think that would still be the best way to go. And we do have some time to work before November the 10th meeting, so.
Mayor, could I say something, please?
Go ahead.
Like I said a few minutes ago, I just came back and was till late Friday of the news, and was shocked. I'm sure we all were, and I didn't get to see the email until Saturday morning, and was quite surprised at some of the wording in Dr. Kelly's resignation terms. And I thought about going up and talking to her, but then I felt, you know, this, she was doing this on her- I thought about going up and talking to her, but then I felt, you know, this, she was doing this on her, this was her own opinion, her own judgment, her own reasons, I let it go with that. And then by coincidence, um, she asked me to come up and sign the checks yesterday. So I had a reason to go up to see Dr. Kelly at that time and to sign the checks. And I told her, we only talked for a very, very short time. I basically told her that I was surprised and that, uh, I didn't think that, um, she would take that step when we needed somebody who was a strong and dedicated person as, as a city manager has been to the city. And not to put words in her mouth, but she basically paraphrased to me that she no longer wants to work here. And I give her credit for giving the notice of sticking around for a few weeks. And I, and, uh, that could be helpful. But, uh, I will tell you this, in those few short minutes I had with her, I believe in my heart, she doesn't want to stay here another day. I really don't. And I think, and anybody can have any comment they want, but I think in her best interest, that, uh, with all due respect, I, I think it's, uh, I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, accept her resignation at the end of this week. That, that's my motion.
He'd like to make a motion to accept her resignation at the end of this week. We, we need a city manager.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and if she's willing to stay till the twenty first, damn it, let her stay, because we need her.
So she, you're her biggest supporter, right? You're her biggest supporter? Isn't that what you said in the newspaper today?
Don't we have to have a second to keep having discussion?
Yeah, I heard what you said, but I also saw what you read.
Is there a second?
I'll second, so they can have their discussion.
Okay. So I don't think it's a, a great idea to dismiss anyone until we have someone to take the position. This is a mistake that we've made repeatedly. This council has. And, uh, we definitely need somebody to be there. It would be great if someone was there for at least a short time, uh, just to be able to carry over and take all of the, uh, different tasks and things that are going on. So, you know, with that, even if they're not willing to take a interim city manager position, um, I would like to at least ask, uh, that Dr. Kelly make as good a records as she can with all of the ongoing projects and try to at least brief, um, um, Ms. Koger and, uh, Melody on, uh, the things, uh, that are going on in the city and...
We had that meeting today and
Okay.
brought them up to speed on all the big projects.
And I'm sure there'll be things that come out, you know, over the next week or whatever. So just as they do, do a good a job as you can of keeping all those records and keeping it going. So. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Richard Macklin, ten oh two West Cornell Street.
Yes, sir.
I had no intention of getting up and speaking, but this was really embarrassing tonight, this, the audience here. And frankly, I travel a lot out of town, Tampa, Orlando, Fort Myers, West Palm, whatever it be. We are the laughing stock. This is kind of what goes on. As many years I, I've lived in this town, over fifty-five years, and it's always the same thing. We're always, always got a peanut gallery out here. It's just always going on, always going on. And as a business owner, I would just like to say one thing. I, I disagree bringing somebody from inside the city that already has a job, that's supposed to be doing something else, and it does cause a lot of problem. I've, I can firsthand tell you, it's not comfortable for anybody to have to step up to a position that they don't really wanna be at, and then they gotta go back to their position. It never works. I don't care what profession you're in, has nothing to do with government, whether it be auto mechanics, whatever it be, it never works. And you usually end up burning that employee out and it just, there's nothing good about that. Uh, I'm really embarrassed, as David Flowers and myself may not have ever, uh, hit it off or anything, but he has the credentials and the ability. It's a short-term situation. And the way they treated that man that was willing to take a short term, help us out?
Yep.
Somebody with knowledge that's been there, that knows what he's talking about. Instead of, let's just get the, the lube guy to come up and rebuild the transmission in your car, you know? Because the other guy's out. Uh, it's very embarrassing. I gotta tell you, I'm very embarrassed to listen to the people behind me. And that's why I'm here for the, the second time. I just, I just had to see if it was gonna go down that way again. Because what people don't realize behind here, you don't see a lot of big business owners in this, in this right back here, do you? They're laughing their butts off the same way I am. It's very embarrassing. Well, no, you don't see, you don't see, you don't see any real business guys back here mouthing off and uh-huh and all that other kind of stuff. And, and yeah, tell them and do all this, you don't see it. So anyway, I just wanted to say, apologize for David Flowers being treated the way he did. I thought that was, that was as childish as it could have been. Uh, and definitely, 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 bringing somebody within is not your answer. You're bringing somebody, you're just causing problems, that's all I wanna say.
Anyone else? All right. With that, we have a motion. Any more discussion on the motion?
I guess I just wanna, can I just ask Dr. Kelly how she, I mean, are you really wanting to stay the four weeks? Or is, I haven't talked to you, you know, since I got the letter. Or is it something that you're wanting to leave now? I mean, what's your honest feeling?
I'm willing to meet the terms of my contract in that letter.
Is it just, just to meet the terms or is it something that you're feeling like? Is it gonna be beneficial for everybody involved? Or is it gonna be too much of a, a sore spot, I guess?
I have no issues with the staff or the residents. So it's, it's not a hardship to deal with them, no.
Uh, I just think that, you know, there are some projects we have going that'd be helpful for her to transfer the information over the next couple of weeks and, and, uh, help the staff get that and address things as they come up that she's already aware of.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none?
And no, it's once it's, um, been called, it's got to be voted on, but you can vote it down.
Okay. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember McKeer?
No.
Councilmember Taylor? Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
No. All right. Well, that concludes our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.